Good evening. We are here for the continued comprehensive permit hearing for a modification of 1180 Boylston Street. My name is Johanna Schneider. I'm sitting as chair of these proceedings. I am joined with Lark Palermo to my right, Mark Zurok to my left, and Randolph Micklejohn to my very far left. Just a procedural note before we get started. The proceeding tonight is being livestreamed on Brookline Interactive, and we also have with us a court stenographer, so everything that you say will be captured this evening. If you are someone who will be speaking this evening, we do ask that you speak loudly, clearly, and slowly so that the stenographer can capture everything that you have to say. This hearing was opened on April 25th, 2019. Our last hearing was May 15th, 2019. Our agenda for this evening is going to be architecture, parking, and traffic peer review. Maria, do you want to start with a staff report for us, please?
Sure. Thank you. Maria Morelli, Senior Planner, Planning Department. So we are covering architecture, traffic, and parking this evening. I do want to point out that at our next hearing, we will be folding in geotechnical review, especially because this proposed -- this proposal does include a new parcel, and the site itself, the main site, is actually the site, is a remediation site, is the site of a former gas station, so there does need to be some evaluation of that new parcel. I did forward to you some initial comments from our geotechnical peer reviewer because they do relate to the geometry of the parking layout, and we will give the applicant, you know, time to address that, if not this hearing, certainly the next one, namely regarding the foundation methods. If C Kent walls are used, what is their thickness, and how does it affect the available area in the parking? So I just want to point that out, that it does affect three functional areas. We also will be addressing the construction management plan and stormwater at a future hearing. Just to get everyone up to speed, this is a little unusual for us to have a modified permit, a comprehensive permit, where there is a substantial review, and we are revisiting an aspect of the design. So I just wanted to point out some of the principles, the design principles, that mattered to the ZBA and were factored into revisions in the initial proposal, because I think it's helpful to have that framework when you're reviewing the peer review this evening. December 21st, 2016 was a hearing that was addressed to the south facade, and as you know, it is at that corner, the southwest facade, where there is a new volume being added. That's where the new parcel, where the sushi place used to be, on Hammond Street. That is what's being, that infill is being provided. It was that south facade that got a lot of attention at the December 2016 hearing, because it hadn't really been addressed. There were other aspects of the plan that got a great deal of attention, which the project team had responded to, but it was the south facade that overlooks Heath Street, and it's something that you would see when you go up Hammond Street toward Route 9 eastbound, where that residential neighborhood is, namely what degree of step backs were helpful to carve that volume. So it was the shape of that site, where there is a jog in the site, as well as the roof line of the Oishi, the sushi place, which was two stories going down to one stories. All of that helped mitigate some of that massing. So now that that is all filled in, that is going to get some attention from our peer review this evening. So that's mainly, I spoke about transitions, why transitions were important. The third thing is typically with a modified comprehensive permit, this is not an opportunity to take another crack at the nut, to reopen the entire case. We are looking at the deltas. That said, it is hard with design just to be confined to the volume, just that piece in that southwest corner. It is important to look at the overall proportions and scale, and if any mitigation is warranted, how that might affect the overall facade. We can speak more to what we need to look at in regard to deltas, but I just want to make it clear, this is not about taking anything away that the ZBA had approved or permitted the first round. Yes, we are looking at the deltas, but we do have to look at the overall effect, and how do we mitigate that impact. We might have to look at something further on that facade, so the rest of that south facade wouldn't be sainted. So I'll just stop there. I think it'll be easier if we just have some testimony, and we could talk about impact, and if we need further advice, Judy Barrett is our 40B consultant, and she will be at a future hearing. So that is it. Maybe later, we can decide what available dates we have.
Okay. We will make a note to revisit the calendar. So, does anyone have any questions from Maria about process where we are? Okay. Mr. Bomer, I think you are first on our list for tonight.
Okay. Hi, I'm Cliff Bomer, and as you know, I looked at this project a while ago, and I'll pick up on a couple of things that Maria said, but maybe a little introduction is, as has been more the, more typical in my presentations, I'm not going to drone through this entire thing. There's a lot of, lot of things here, but I do want to make a couple of points that you wouldn't know. One thing I do mention in the report, that, picking up a little bit on what Maria said, that this, I did mention in this, about this view, that I thought it probably would need some more looking at, but I didn't have the sketch-up model. It turns out, we did have the sketch-up model, so since I wrote this this past weekend, I have had access to the sketch-up model, and actually, this image is from the sketch-up model. So that was very helpful in looking at some things that I really wanted to look at. In addition, a couple other things that I said in here, that I just want to make sure it doesn't create any confusion. I mentioned at one point about, it appeared that some of the setbacks or step backs, particularly on the east side, had diminished. It's not clear that that is the case. I base that from looking at the elevations. It appeared from the elevations that that might be the case, but I didn't really have dimensions. But I don't think that's going to end up being all that. Uh-oh, Maria, what's going on there?
You can just click on.
Sorry.
Okay.
But in any case, so there were a couple, so there are a couple of things I just want to set the record straight on that I think are important. I will say, though, that, and I don't think Maria said this, but it might be the best segue, is also in this current report, I still talk about the east side of the building and the relationship of that, of the mass of this building to the six-family building to the east. And that was something that I talked about a bit, quite a bit, actually, in the previous meetings that we had about the development, and, but I will say, and in the spirit of not undoing things, but at the same time recognizing that you can't change too many ingredients in a recipe without really changing the flavor of the whole recipe. I think there was, by the time the permit was granted, I think there was a reasonable balance of, of impact, in the sense that on that east end, even though that single building on the east end is, is seeing a lot of impact, certainly with access to the sun, both view of a bright sky as well as direct shadows on the building, the view from this view in particular, and this is where the segue happens, on the south side of the elevation. So the, I think the, there is a important, important impact in the public realm, and that's really what this view is all about, is all of the people coming from along Hammond Street headed north, but also, I'll show you a couple of other images that have to do with the perception of the building from the west as well. So I'll kind of cut to the chase on my biggest issues, although I will say there are a handful of things that I think are important technical points that are in this report. Maria already brought up one of them, and I think the geotechnical flagged the same thing about the shoring that would be required to build the parking garage, and ultimately, what the thickness of those walls would be. The geotechnical also brings up the recommendation of looking down in the basement of the neighboring building to make sure that they really know what they're dealing with once they actually would start construction on the project. I think there was one other, one other point I did want to make up, and this was a typo, basically, was I mentioned shadow impact in the winter months on the buildings on the south side, and actually, it's the summer months. It's when the sun is actually north of west, north of due west, when that, by filling in the corner, you get a little more shadow impact. But again, I'll just get to, that's this corner. I'll get to the, to what my main concerns are, and it's come back to the south side of the building. And without trying to be funny, I think one kind of issue with a big change like this was, was that balancing act that was, I think, very successful in the last iteration of the building. So what I've spent a lot of time looking at is the difference, the visual impact and real impact of, of the, the new scheme compared with the old scheme. So I'm just going to run through those images, because I think it encapsulates my concerns. So that is, that's our current view, and as Maria pointed out, this is the piece that was filled in. Previously, there's, well, there exists now a smaller scale building with a little gable roof right at that point. So the, I think the, the big change, and Maria mentioned it, was that there was this piece that used to be here, really was a, worked very well as a mitigating volume to, to the larger five-story, no, six stories, actually, volume adjacent. And what, and we'll see images of it as well. So now there's, as you can see, a very sheer wall that comes up right against this one-story commercial use on Hammond Street. Just some other views of it, a little bit redundant, but you kind of get the picture of the new volume. Other views of it, again, the, you know, this is a transitional zone, and at this point, the proposal is a very tall wall. I think up to this point, it's almost 70 feet tall. Now, going back in history a little bit, this isn't the cleanest image, but I've got some ones that I think are cleaner. So this was a view up Hammond Street when it was more of a, when this corner wasn't part of the building anymore. There's a mitigating piece on this side, and it's quite a drastically different massing. Again, there, this was not all that different by the time this, or something like it was approved. This end was not that different, but this end was significantly different. This is, you may remember the animated show that was really effective, I think, and these are some snips from that show. So when I was talking about the view for, this is now west on Boylston Street, looking towards the project, the overall proportions, it isn't just the impact of that tall wall that's over there. Now, it's also, when I was talking about maintaining that balance between the big building and working with mitigation, having a very narrow elevation on this side, I think proportionally worked very well. Some other views that you can see of, of the previous building, there's that little piece of the existing little gable-roofed building. Again, this one is, I think, very clear. The piece that is now filled in, used to be this piece. I think that creates a nice, a nice integration of that existing scale with the, with the taller building, which I think back when this was previously, previously approved, there was no, no major issue about a taller building on Route 9. It certainly was discussed, but it would, the fact that it did build up to that and using this existing piece of fabric to help make that transition was, was pretty successful. Again, some views that I think really make the point of, of how better integration, and also a more interesting, just visually more interesting volume as well. I'm including this one, because I think this really makes the point about the proportions. And then coming, you know, seeing the building coming from the west, I think it has a nice, modern feel to it. It's, it's a complex elevation. There's some mitigation that's happening over there with this little area, but all told, the overall proportions, including cutting back over here, there were efforts made, and are in the current version, of this kind of peeling away of the volume back at the east end of it, but from the mitigation, the most important mitigation, I think, is happening in there by using that existing Some more views. Again, I think compared with the current proposal, where this face is significantly longer, it really changes the overall perception of the building. Again, just some street-level views. This is a further down Hancock, and again, I think that the feeling that, of this, where you do see a tall building, it certainly doesn't have the abrupt qualities of the current proposal. And again, as you get closer, it's even more striking. A little bit of repetition here, but in any case, I think that, I think that is, for me, the most important part, that that kind of balance that was struck, and I'll get back to the, to the current view, that balance that was struck of really being able to, to locate a large volume on Route 9. In the previous incarnation, I thought it reached a good place. And I think this addition, filling this back in now, I think it would need a lot of careful thinking in order, in order to really approach the, the level of integration with the existing fabric that the previous proposal had. So that's my, trying as hard as I can to just focus on the impact of that new piece, but I do want to emphasize that, as Maria said, that it's hard to take something as holistic as a building is and try to just analyze what the impact of one piece is, because it really, your perception of the entire building changes, and where a tall building might work if it's properly carved away in the right places, it changes rather drastically when something that I think had a lot of interest in the form of it is essentially just a box, a very simple box from this side. A couple other comments that are somewhat architectural, I think it's very clear in your traffic, I think, your traffic people will say something similar. I think a lot of the issues that were discussed over the hearings about queuing on Route 9 and the traffic-related issues, that certainly the new garage plan appears to work much better than where it was. So while some pieces, I think, are really working pretty well and moving in the right direction, even though that's not my realm of expertise, I think, I think we need to back up a bit and go back to those discussions of this, this view that is, has really major impact from the public realm.
Any questions for Cliff? Randall?
Cliff, I just want to make sure I understand what you were saying about the east side of the building, because the images you're showing us are the south and the west.
Yeah, and I don't, sorry, I don't.
Yeah, no, that's all right. I think, I don't think we need a picture for this, but what you said towards the end of the June 16th letter, you referred to a suggestion you had made in the last letter report to, I'm reading, to decrease the shadow impact in the six-family structures of the east. You consider stepping back the floor. And then you go on, and almost, and then you say that the current design didn't, doesn't incorporate that suggestion.
Well, it didn't change.
Did the design, did the design that was already received the permit have to incorporate that? I wasn't clear.
Well, I think it depends on which iteration. No, that's a good question. It wasn't clear. Yeah. Right. The, I think that what was permitted is identical to what this is on the east end. It should, it's very close. There's, there are changes at the garage level because of the way the garage works now.
Right.
But as far as that massing integration, or the, the massing accommodations to the building towards the east, again, I, I was bringing that up to the very end of the hearing. It, it was approved, even though I had concerns with it. Again, and that's why I started this, by saying to me, it's, there was a balance struck that I thought was a fair measuring of, of impact. If by number of people it, you're talking about having been impacted, I think the arithmetic kind of worked. But it changes now. It's changed a lot. So to me, it kind of throws the balls back up in the air again. I think that, for me, opening up the discussion on impact, most importantly, from this side, is what's been triggered by these changes.
Cliff, to clarify, so you're suggesting that the infill changes the character of the building because of this view, obviously. We had numerous discussions about the height of the building before.
We did.
And you were satisfied that the end product before this iteration didn't impact the building next door, the six-family, totally negatively. I mean, it was, it's a compromise, obviously.
Yes.
But are you suggesting now that we, we should push for a reduction in the scale appearance on this side of the building? Is that what you're recommending?
Yes. To me, it.
And how would you suggest that be done?
Well, I mean, the way it worked before was, there was a, a smaller mass. I mean, it had other qualities that related it to, you know, to the existing fabric. It's an old building. But it was primarily the fact that the tall part of the building was further away. There was a intermediate piece in front that, that provided some level of screening. The proportions were very different. So the previous view from here, you saw a relatively narrow, almost kind of tower-like element on the corner that I thought worked very well. And the, the building has really changed. As I said, it's gone from something that I think had some, was perceived differently from every angle, actually, which is always kind of interesting. And I think you may remember that we talked a lot before about not wanting this to look like the back of the building, and I think there was a lot of work put in to making that happen. But in a sense, I kind of feel like we're starting over again with a harder problem, because before the building, the actual mass of the tall part, tall part of the building was further away. It had this other structure in the middle, and there was a, almost at a kind of tweaking level of treatment of the top floor, you know, changing of materials. There were a lot of things that were done that I think really got it within a range that was working well.
So the, the prior iteration had a more variety of.
Yeah.
Finishes, I believe.
Yeah, and actually, I bring that up in the report. It wasn't clear to me, because the newer drawings didn't have material callouts on them. But again, I think there's, there were, the moves worked better. Certainly, having, as I was saying, the narrower dimension, I think the erosion of the top there, significant setback, was all working pretty well. You know, there was a similar approach at this point in the building with this, with what was going on here, so that these proportions, I think, were, were very carefully worked out and thought about. So it.
So again, I'm just asking you for a suggestion.
Yeah.
In terms of maybe scaling back the south face of the building with steps or different material colors, maybe indent, I'm not technical, but.
No, no, you're exactly spot on.
Indenting from, from Hammond Street on the corner, maybe, and maybe stepping from third floor to fifth floor. Would that work better?
It's where you would start, for sure. You know, again, because you kind of have to look at the.
Like, right there. Like, for instance, if, if the corner was pushed back a bit in both, in both directions, and then stepped up to the fifth floor.
Well, I know, but I, I would start, I mean, before, what was here went up to approximately this height, I think, something like that, counting the gable roof, something that was space in between, so things were, there was some breathing room around the building. But yes, you would certainly start looking at articulation and meaningful step backs. I think that kind of carving away that I was pointing out up there through that balcony, that you don't really have that sense anymore. It might be that you work with the, with the longer elevation and have it successively back up, like on the front of the building. The front of the building does that in the current version and the old version, how it kind of erodes back to more.
Scales down.
Yeah, to more to meet the height of the six-story building. But this is a tougher problem. I mean, at least starting, and this, to me, is, and you've heard me say this before, you know, this is kind of the block of clay that you're starting with, and then certainly an exercise you want to go through is, is to see if you can make it less abrupt than a very tall wall immediately adjacent to another building. I mean, not to be overly harsh, but, I mean, I see no attempt to mitigate the massing of this building at all. Nothing that, that is sensible to me. I mean, that I can really see.
Okay. That, I, I don't disagree with you. I just wanted to clarify your opinion.
Okay, sorry.
Cliff, just one question about the drawing that you have up now, and I know that these are still in early phases. It looks like there are some trees up at the very highest corner of the building. Is there some sort of rooftop garden element that's been added to this that I Is there some sort of rooftop garden element that's been added to this that I somehow missed in my review of the plans? Well.
Yeah, that's what I think. What, this is, this is the games of the sketch-up model. I didn't go quite forward enough to lose all the trees, I think. There was in the other version, and I showed you that, that top floor was set back and there were some trees up there.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mark.
There.
Cliff, I, yes, I, I have a couple of questions. One of them actually does relate to that. And you noted in your report that there is no provision for any open space in this project.
Other than immediate, and it wasn't labeled as such, but in the previous incarnation, there was a large indentation on the west side of the building. I think there was a bench shown there.
I see. And is that gone now?
No, the indentation's still there, I think, but the bench was not in the drawing. So my only point was that the, the program, what appeared to be, could still be programmable outdoor space, some of it was in the public realm or immediately adjacent.
Well, it would seem very important to me that there be some open space if this is intended to be for housing seniors. This is a very busy street, as is Hammond Street, and for them to have a place of respite outside, I, I think would be an amenity that is really essential.
I agree.
Yeah.
Waiting for Uber or something.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Just to remind you, there is an indentation on the first floor on the sidewalk on the Boylston Street.
Right, but this isn't a, a sort of outdoor space with a bench, with, with trees and grass and, you know, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking of, you know, sort of as an example of this kind of urban senior living facility. There's one right over the town line in Brighton, Providence House, which is a higher-level building, but it has some outdoor space, like a sort of courtyard area, that sort of thing. I'm familiar with it because my mother was there for a while, and it really was critical that there be outside space for the people who lived there, even though it's in a very densely developed urban area. That's just something that's important, I believe.
Potentially, if you're creating significant step backs, you could have some outdoor balcony space. And on the south side of the building, it would be very sunny outdoor space.
And, and in this particular case, there, in this design, there was outdoor space or, or at least some terracing that, yeah.
It would be for the unit, though that would be private.
The other question I have, and I'm, I'm essentially taking a page out of a couple of other local 40B projects. That I'm familiar with. With the acquisition of this next-door building, rather than redesigning the initial building that was permitted, what about the potential of retaining the building that's been purchased and modifying that to create housing units?
Well, I think one, I mean, that certainly is worth thinking about, but I think one thing that really benefited from acquiring that site was it really fixed the parking problem.
Well, in, in other words, you're able to do underground parking, but, but would that, would that not be possible if you, if you actually reuse the existing structure for housing? Could you still excavate underneath it? I'm assuming that the parking goes underneath.
Theoretically, it would be pretty rough going because you'd have to support that while you're. But it doesn't mean, I mean, the concept of having a separate building, whether it's that existing one or another smaller building.
Something, right, something that's more in keeping with the transition that you're describing from Hammond Street. Because again, I, I apologize since I wasn't involved with the initial permitting of this project in the, in the beginning. But, and I understand there's been a lot of discussion about height, but if you could sort of catch me up a little bit, I'm, I'm quite familiar with this area. What other buildings are equivalent height in the area? Is there something that you can point to? So, I mean, I know there's condominium buildings that are about four stories, a little bit farther down, and, and there's the Beaver Country Day School that has buildings that are, but I don't know if there's, I, I can't think of anything off the top of my head that's 70 feet high, so just curious.
You know, I think I wrote that in my previous, one of the previous reports. I just don't have it with me. I'm, I'm assuming it's to the west, there are larger buildings. There may not be 70-foot buildings.
Right. To the west, toward, toward.
Out of town.
Right, toward. I'm just trying to think there's what.
Cypress Apartments is actually, it's a six-story building and there's like a 10-foot setback.
Yeah, that's right.
But it is, but it is further down going.
Yeah, that's right.
The towers in Chestnut Hill.
That, right.
Right. Right, that's helpful, yeah.
If I can, I'm sorry, if I can just remind everyone, because of the way that the hearings are being transcribed, it's really important not to talk over each other. It will help the interview record.
I would like to point out one, just again, going back to what mitigation strategies could be considered, and I'll repeat it, but you can see it here, is this is a very long elevation, and what they did was, I mean, I kind of called it eroding it away, but they did change the facade, it did create, it changed the volume and it did, you know, in plan, and it also was a nice visual effort to tie in. And now that there's a long elevation over on this side, too, I think you look at that kind of strategy as well, as ways to make it, again, more holistically appropriate.
Randolph, did you have another question?
Yes, thank you. Can I just follow on that clip?
Yeah.
Because I think, you know, working within the, you know, just a narrow look at what has changed, you know, that, that's the main thing, you know, looking at building elevations at least, that, that, you know, this, this proposal that had a long elevation on a street with a certain character and a, a shorter and more vertically articulated elevation on a street with another kind of character, it's, it's the second one that has changed. And if you look at the current architectural drawings, the, the Hammond Street elevation is now, you know, it has a lot, it's articulated very hori, that's fine, you know, very horizontally. And I guess one of my questions is, you know, would you consider, you know, along with or instead of, never mind that for now, the, the idea of stepping down, you know, one, because I, and I, I guess I'm, I'm thinking about this because, you know, it is a bigger piece of land. It's not completely unreasonable for the building to be bigger, but if you think there's value in, in retaining difference between its major elevation, then what would you think of the idea of just artic, having this one articulated in a more vertical, broken down way? Because I think that was one of the, that's one of the things that's distinctly changed. You know, you saw, you pointed out from a couple of views that it's sort of vertically arranged and it's narrower, and it's gotten wider, but it could still be more vertical.
That's right. And, and because of the way it was broken up before, there are dimensional similarities, even though it's taller, the, still the planned dimension relates more to some of the existing buildings, you know, the kind of module of the elevations when it was shorter and broken up. But I, I agree. I mean, I think it really, really changed on this side to a horizontal treatment when before it was fully about being vertical.
Do you think it makes this Hammond Street look kind of like a side of the building more than it did before?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I think, you know, I, I think it's, again, going back to some other 40Bs that we've looked at together, we know a lot of the moves and, you know, there's a big difference between 70 feet and 60 feet or, you know, just this top, if you just imagine if that piece were back there instead of there, that's a big difference. This is a very tall, sheer face. So you, I think you start working with these variables. I think the building, and again, I think what's been lost is a kind of holistic integration of the building. And it really, now, maybe this is a little bit different from what Randolph was saying, but now it is kind of one building on, on Route Nine and a completely different building over here. And they, they just don't tie together the well, the way they did before. I thought it nailed down the corner really nicely before and yet didn't while it was tall, and that certainly was an issue that was discussed a lot. It worked as a tall building because it, it had a, a kind of integrated feel or coherent feel to it, that it was an object that worked. And I think now it's gone more towards this could be an office building, I think. And you, you remember, there were discussions before also about window treatments, you know, the kind of floor-to-ceiling window treatments, and did the other building look more office-like? And is that okay on Route Nine? Because Route Nine is a kind of special case, certainly in Brookline it is. And especially once you get to these kinds of blocky proportions, I think you're right back to office building again.
Okay, any more questions for Cliff? And to the applicant, you've received Cliff's written comments, correct? Okay, thank you. We are going to move on now to traffic peer review.
Hi, my name is Jane Davis. I'm with Environmental Partners, and Jim Fitzgerald sends his apologies for not being able to make it tonight. We've reviewed the supplemental information that VAI put in a memo for 1180 Boylston Street dated April 26, 2019. In general, VAI has prepared the supplemental traffic information in a professional manner consistent with standard engineering practices. As you know, the site is occupied by a gas station that is no longer in service. Since the original review of this project in 2016, the number of age-restricted units has increased from 45 to 50 units, and the retail space has increased from 5,300 square feet to 6,424 square feet. VAI used the latest edition, which is the 10th edition of the trip generation manual, to estimate the site-generated vehicle trips using land use code 820 for shopping center and land use code 252 for senior adult housing. Environmental Partners agrees with the usage of both of these land use codes. However, we would like to note that for the shopping center, it's typically for much larger retail centers. So VAI used a methodology in which they took the smallest data points and created, calculated an average rate, which is more likely to accurately predict the, the trips from the site. And we do agree with this methodology. They also used a reduction for transit and walking and biking. They used a 35% reduction for retail based on information from the central transportation planning staff. And they used a 40% reduction for, sorry, did I say that was for retail? This is for residential, from, from the journey-to-work data from the United States Census Bureau. We agree with these percentages, and we would just like to note that these trips will not be driving a vehicle to the site, but they will be walking, biking, and using transit. VAI also accounted for pass-by trips, which are vehicles that are already on the roadway and in the passing stream of traffic and are not considered new trips generated by the site. They used a 25% reduction for this, and we agree that this is a reasonable, reasonable assumption. In table three of the memo, they compare the trips from the, the prior usage, which was the gas station, to the proposed usage for the residential and retail without considering pass-by trips. With this comparison, there is a, a net reduction in the number of vehicle trips compared to the, to the gas station. However, we, you know, one might argue that a gas station has a lot more pass-by trips than a retail center, so we, we went ahead and kind of calculated that out to see if there were, you know, if there was a difference. And there's still a net reduction at the end of the day, even with the pass-by trips. So comparing the previous analysis from, from 2016, March of 2016, there will be a relatively small amount of, of, of vehicles. There'll be eight additional vehicle trips in the, in the morning peak hour and 20 additional vehicle trips in the evening peak hour. VAI did not provide additional analyses based on the new trip generation. However, the site is still expected to generate fewer trips than the, the previous usage of the gas station. We do note that retail developments typically generate peak traffic on Saturdays, and they did not supply information for Saturdays to, for comparison. They also updated the crash data based on mass dot information. We do recommend obtaining crash data from the Brookline Police Department for a more accurate crash history. For the five-year period between 2012 and 2016, the intersection crash rate at the Boylston and Hammond Street intersection was 0.37 per million entering vehicles. And at the Hammond Street, He Street intersection, it was 0.11 per million entering vehicles. Both of these rates are substantially lower than the district and statewide averages for signalled intersections, which are 0.71 and 0.78. We, even though these crash rates are substantially lower than, than, than the average rates, we do want to note that there were 12 rear-end crashes over the five-year period at the Boylston, at Hammond Street intersection, and 12 out of the 29 total crashes occurred in the year 2016. And I believe that concludes our findings.
Are there particular items of follow-up that you feel are important that we request from the development team in order to fully assess the impacts of the addition or modification, rather?
No, I don't think so. I think, you know, like as I, as I said, for the crash history, if you wanted an accurate crash history, you could, you could request the crash reports from Brookline. I don't necessarily think that that's necessary, given that the crash rates are substantially lower than, than the averages. Typically, we would ask for analysis if we thought it was going to be a problem. There are still less trips than the previous usage. It's the amount of vehicles that will be added to the network, it's pretty minimal, you know, in the, in the PMP hours, one vehicle every three minutes. I don't anticipate there being much effect on the delay of the intersection.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I'm curious because I am very familiar with the intersection as well. Did you do any analysis of the traffic control that exists as to whether it's effective in controlling the flow of traffic?
I believe that may have been done as part of the original submission. It was, there was no analyses done as part of this memo, the updated memo. I did read through the original submission. I, you know, I did work for Environmental Partners at the time. I read through it, and it, it, it looks like it's, you know, it's, there's some heavy queuing happening there during the peak hours. Whether or not that can be mitigated, it's, it's possible. I believe that, that Jim Fitzgerald did make some recommendations as far as that goes. But again, that was not something that we were reviewing as part of this.
Mark, did you have something?
No.
Okay. Thank you. And our final peer review consultant tonight is going to be regarding parking.
Hi, Brandon Schrecker, Walker Consultants. Basically, I'm just going to run through the high points of our, our memo, and then any questions, just let me know. So just reiterating, the 50 residential units and 6,400 square feet of retail space, there are 70 spaces in this facility. There was an allocation noted of 20 spaces for the retail and 50 spaces for the residential. From a zoning perspective, it requires two spaces per residential unit and one per 200 square feet of retail. That would equate to 100 residential spaces and 32 retail spaces. Speaking to the 50 residential, that's a one-to-one ratio. Typically, what we would, we would see or recommend in a. Typically, what we would, we would see or recommend in an area like this is something in the range of .7 to .9. So they're above that. Now that said, with the district requirement for the 10% for visitors and tradespeople, that would bring that down to the .9. Touching on the retail spaces, there wasn't information to denote why the 32 to the 20. However, as was addressed in the Simon report as well, if you kept with zoning and took 32 spaces, that would leave 38 spaces for the residential. That represents a .76 space factor, so that is within that range that we noted. It's on the lower end, but that does fall within that .7 to .9 ratio. With regards to the peak hour volumes, obviously Traffic touched on that, we don't really take exception to what we, what we saw there. And then the other pieces here are geometric points that are related to zoning. Some of it are technical pieces, and I'll get into what I mean by that. But the first part is the garage door. It's shown as 23 feet, which by zoning is wider than is allowed, but we would like to point out that you will have jams on that door, you have parking equipment, those will impede on that available width. And so while 23 may seem wide, we would suggest that that's kept at least until, you know, the parking equipment and everything's laid out, and it's probably a reasonable width for what that should be. For drive aisles, not all were dimensioned, but the ones that were dimensioned appear to be about 22 foot six. There is a zoning requirement for eight-foot-six spaces of 23 feet. So from that perspective, the drive aisle is a little more narrow than what zoning would allow. There are 10 compact spaces within the garage. That does fall within the allowable amount for 70 spaces overall. There are a few of those spaces that would technically not meet the zoning requirement of the drive aisle directly behind it because of the way they're laid out. They do appear that they could be accessed, but that should be verified. There's also two spaces in the top-right corner of the plan, which look like they may overlap, in which case if someone parks there with a car that's longer, then it should really fit in that space, it could block the ability to get into the other space. And that just leads into just a general statement, depending on the user group, in some instances, we don't always recommend compact spaces. In an instance where these are assigned spaces, which could be potentially done with residential, that can be managed, so they understand what the limitations on the vehicle that they can park there. If it was opened up for general retail, then that poses that issue of, you know, the potential of someone miss parking in that space and blocking the ability to access the other The next point, the ramp width, is shown as 20 feet. If that is defined as an entry drive by zoning, that would meet zoning. From our recommendation standpoint, 20 feet is tight for two-way traffic and current traffic, particularly when you consider the vertical walls on either side. When you're driving a vehicle, you have a tendency to avoid vertical obstructions. And so 20 feet is relatively tight. It will also make the turning maneuvers at the bottom of the ramp tight. One particular location where that's apparent is B7, and that's just, has to do with the amount of turning radius that's available there. That may be an area that is confirmed with a turning analysis. There's two spaces on grade, and similarly, this is a case where technically they don't have the full drive aisle width behind them because of a column. Looking at it, it does appear that you could access these spaces, but again, that's something that may want to be verified. Then there is one space at the bottom level, and it's right up against the wall in a dead end. And that cases are often difficult to access, and that may want to be a compact space. From an accessibility standpoint, the number of spaces is correct. We did note that there are columns encroaching on the space, and so that should just be reviewed. Typically, you don't want any sort of vertical obstruction encroaching on a ADA space or its access aisle. Those were all the comments from our review.
Did you have a question?
No.
Any questions?
No.
I do have a question with respect to the sort of lack of information or concerns that you raised. Do any of them go to or rise to the level of a safety concern about the function of this garage as currently designed?
The only safety concern would be related to the turns, when you have concentric turns, and whether those would cross paths. I think in some of these cases, you may have that. For the residential use, the peak hour volumes are very minimal, and so you should have less cases of cross-traffic. It would really be more related to the retail when you have people coming in and out, and that will obviously depend on what that retail use is as well.
Okay. Would the applicant's team care to respond to any of the peer review testimony we've heard tonight?
Stefan Vogelmann with CBT Architects in Boston. Yeah, a couple of comments that were to use. First of all, I just think it's also helpful that if we're talking about these things, we potentially use a side-by-side comparison of both the earlier, the previously approved concept at the top with the proposed at the bottom. I thought these might help you guys understand what we were, what Cliff was discussing. And I do generally agree with some of the things that Cliff had brought up, and I think we certainly can study the corner condition and how it mediates between the one-story retail and our project. Shadow studies, well, we can, I guess, if I flip between these, I don't think Cliff commented again on the shadow studies that happened on the, on the left-hand side of this building. He's still concerned with the shadows that are falling on top of the, crossing over the six-story to the, so that's to the east. But the impact is pretty much, I don't think there's any new impact, but this way from the building, as you see, this is the approved, and I will flip to the new. Now, there's the shadows are, any shadow impacts are really happening in the lower center corner of that site on Hammond Street and not, and not impacting additional, additionally the six-family building. This side is just to remind us that the foot, while the footprint of the building is probably about, I think, like 13-something thousand, the actual ground area of the building only has a 59% coverage on the site. So what that means is there's a lot of, I put a word out there, like protected overhangs that, especially along Route Nine, where we have that setback you see on the top of the screen, where that helps the sidewalk experience, and all the retail entrances are recessed. And as you see on the left-hand of the screen along Hammond, there's still the recesses that, and the bench will still be there at the front door in that spot.
Could you point that spot out?
Did I what?
Could you point out that spot?
It would be right there. And that's the exact same, nearly the same spot it was before, when the building, you know, was, because that's 3,000 square foot of the existing, it's called Sushi site right here. So that was, it's more or less in the same spot. And then lastly, to some of the parking comments that came up, we were able to receive some of the memos, and we did quickly look at getting the extra six inches by moving the core walls in six more inches to get the 23 feet we would need. And we are aware of, up in this upper corner, some of these, actually, perhaps in the next level now, where some of the compact cars, this is what we were talking about, that you could be, if a car, you know, we have to resolve some of these things still. But hopefully, these aren't anything to do with life safety or anything like that, but they will be, we do realize that we do have to meet the zoning bylaw for the space dimensions. Other than that, I could... So these will also help, I kind of wish that I interrupted Cliff and just had him also be able to use these side-by-sides. Because again, I think they're, they will help you see that what in our opinion was originally a building that seemed to be unresolved or incomplete, in the sense that it's like that house in Atlantic City around the casino, and now it's, we're, it's complete and simplified. But I do understand the situation of the mediation between the one-story and the five-story. I think for the next time we, it's certainly, you know, easy enough to resolve, I think, in adding more verticality and perhaps bringing the massive corner around on that side. For example, changing the aesthetic of this and pulling it around. There's also material things we can do to change. As far as the material call-ups, nothing on this building, no materials have changed from the approved thing, it's just more of it. And however, in fact, well, there is one change, is that we may have gotten rid of, in the previous project, this was because of the zero, because of the zero condition on that lot line, we had some fiber cement panels and things like that. So those are being, because this building has more, more street presence now, those materials will be upgraded to the, to the wood tone panel systems that we were proposing for, you know, the three different colored panels we're proposing for the entire project. So we basically eliminated the cement fiber board stuff. As far as the view from Hammond, we view this building as a landmark, so there are distant views, which are landmarks, which we think are important to consider. And I would say that in some ways, I disagree with Cliff, I think that the horizontality of this new addition contrasts the vertical piece, at least in this view, as opposed to having two vertical things, the vertical, let's say the corner tower, and this being vertical, now we have a vertical element and a more of a horizontal element to contrast it. So that's, again, that might be academic. And this is to show the, at the rear of the building, let's say, I wanted just to reiterate that, yes, in fact, we are keeping, everything you see here is exactly the same setbacks that they were for the approved version that you see here. But, and you can see that we've brought the wood tone panel system around the back, which what in, which what used to be cement board. So I just, we'll leave it at that, but those are my comments.
I have one question for you, I'll probably have others later on. But the original plan as approved had what appeared to be a balcony along Hammond Street on the top floor, a setback. It appears from the conception here that that's no longer there, or it's substantially reduced. Is there a reason?
The railing system, it is, it is a roof.
No, I'm talking about the top floor.
Right. So that balcony is, in the approved drawings, it was a, we submitted the drawings as a, as a roof, right there, as a setback, it's a five-foot, I believe, five-foot setback, and it's a roof.
So it's not a balcony?
It's not a balcony. Early renderings...
But it is a setback.
It is a setback, yes.
Is it reduced in the...
No, no, we've, we just literally have just carried it down, down Hammond Street.
It looks reduced on the conception. That's okay.
Yeah, just one item about the material call-out, and I know Cliff is tracking these to, you know, make sure what's changing, what's not changing. There's one or two of us, maybe, who didn't sit this case the first time, and it's, being reminded about the material is helpful, because we didn't have it in our head from sitting through many hearings before, and I know you've done that before, but to the extent when you talk about the design, you can help us, they inform us what the material was, I appreciate it. Oh, at this point, right now? No, no, when you come back. Sure. I appreciate what you're suggesting, go print it next time. And when we say wood, we are referring to wood tone panels, not necessarily actual wood, as you might imagine. Right.
Thank you. Anything else from Mr. Engler, of course? Please come up.
Good evening, Bob Engler, E-N-G-L-E-R, S-E-B, 4EB Consultant. Just a minor issue maybe for you guys, not so much for us, but nothing to do with this. And I think it bears saying for the record, because you're going to face other cases where you have modifications and amendments. And we're sensitive in the fact that the review should be just on those amendments, and the prices we pay for peer review should be tied to just those things. I don't want to raise the traffic as an example, but to look at traffic volumes for five units, when you have eight cars in the morning, 20 at night, all the others in the crash data and all that, we're paying for all that. I just, that's not really the intent of the modification scenario. And I think a little, parking's a little different, because it's a different layout, but the volumes or the codes or the number of spaces. Cliff's more complicated, because he's supposed to be looking at the changes, but as he's said many times, the changes envelop the whole building, so you have to look at that. So that's our concern about what we're paying for and for future use, for future reference for other projects. I think you all ought to bear in mind what you're supposed to be talking about and not going back, even though I respect that some of you haven't been on the original discussion, but going back to earlier discussions is difficult. The only other thing I want to mention as a non-architect here is, I'm just sitting here observing that we have good architecture firm with some ideas, and we have a good reviewer and architects on the board, and we may never come to a final decision, but I appreciate the attempt to say, what is Cliff saying actually to, in terms of the impact of the number of units or the volume? Because I have to look at the economics of all that. So you're asking him to pin that down, and that's what we'll be looking at in the next iteration, is what, what really is involved in making this work, and does it entail loss of units? So that's, to me, the next step, and that's what we'll be looking at. And after that, you'll have to decide what's, you know, is it an appropriate building or not, and whatever, you know all those issues. So that's all I want to say.
Mr. Engler, do you have a specific issue with the traffic peer report, peer review report that was presented to us today?
We do have an issue with what we paid for it, that it was much more than what, you're looking at five units. You really, if it were taken alone, you would not even need a traffic report. The state would say anything less than 20 units or 100 units in an hourly period, you don't have to do a traffic report. And that's really all we had. So it was, you know, three or $4,000, it's not the end of the world, but I don't think it's appropriate.
But it's not the conclusions in the report that you take issue with?
No conclusion, no issue with the conclusions, no. We like the conclusions.
So isn't that worth $3,000? And I will just remind everyone that the purpose of these peer reviews that we do is to give the board peace of mind that modifications to a previously reviewed and approved project don't change the board's analysis in any way or lessen the board's comfort level with a project going forward. Anything else from the applicant?
Rajesh Navala Krishna, attorney, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. So I just want to thank the zoning board for their time. Obviously, those of you who were involved with this before know that there was a lot of time and effort spent. We really were excited to build this building a couple of years ago, and then we found out, mainly because of the, the shape and the size of the lot and the parking scheme that was previously very complicated, as some of you know, and expensive, that it was not feasible to build. It took a while to acquire the adjoining lot, but that made a huge difference. This is still a very expensive site. Obviously, it was, as has been noted, it was a gas station for many years, and will now be, the site will be fully cleaned up. It's been, some remediation has been done. has been done. We're still very excited to build this building. We believe that in every way, it's a much better building and project than it was in the prior version, being a more regular shape, and being able to have the self-parking and the other improvements that we've made. Much of it remains the same, but we really believe that it's much better. And we appreciate the comments that are made. But we also still have to be very sensitive to the financial concerns and the expense of building on a site like this. So we appreciate your comments and the peer review, and just wanted to reinforce that we look forward to moving forward with this building.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to public comments. I would remind members of the public who want to speak about the project, that public comment tonight could, should be focused on the technical issues that we have had before us this evening. So we're looking for any comments related to architecture, traffic, or parking. If there are members of the public who do wish to speak, we would ask that you approach the podium and start by giving us your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. I'm David Cobus. I live at 629 Hammond Street, which is the cross street between Hammond and Heath. And I have only one point to make, and that has to do with the delta on the waivers. But before that, I'd like to just mention two things that came up earlier. One was a question, were there any other large buildings in this neighborhood? I remember last year, I did a, made a proposal about that, and it's quite elaborate. But in short, if you go all the way to Hammond Pond Parkway, there's no building taller than the proposed building that isn't fully set back. And there's very few of them, like a bank building. But that's set back way far from Boylston. On the other side of the street is the street, which are, I think, maximum four stories high. And they, of course, are set back very far. I don't know, I'm not good at estimating, but I'd say hundreds of feet from Boylston. That's one point. Second, just a comment about the crash rate that was mentioned. As a resident of that corner at Hammond and Heath, I can tell you that I would be highly suspect of any crashes because the traffic's backed up at that intersection on Hammond Street in both directions. And in fact, coming from the south to Hammond Street, up Hammond Street to Heath, it's backed up by about four blocks. So there's not going to be any crashes. I'm not sure what the study means to show by looking at crashes, but I don't think that's pertinent personally. Now, I said I only had one point to make, and it's about the delta of the waivers. And first, just to give a little context of it, the board did approve, two years ago, each of the waivers requested. But that was done on a one-by-one basis. And some of the waivers were quite exceptional. I didn't quite understand them. But one of them, for example, was reducing the distance from the boundary from the required 10 feet to just one inch. That seemed to be astounding to me. But it passed. And there are several others that were similarly, seemed to me, to be out of line. And what I didn't understand, and I hope the board will look at it this time around, is the overall gestalt of all of those put together. You say, this misses, this misses, this misses, but we'll pass, we'll pass, we'll pass. But what about all of it together? That's what I hope you all will address, because that isn't a code. That's putting all the codes together and all the waivers together. So that was just a preliminary. I looked at the changes in the, in the proposed project here. And I was hoping that because of the new land, that some of the waivers would be less egregious. But none were. And in fact, some were a little more egregious. And to give you just one of those, which I think is a very crucial one, that points to the first presentation that was made. It's the maximum ratio of gross floor area to lot area. And it had been, the required value is 1.0. And what was accepted last time was 4.4, or 440% more than the code. Well, now it's gone from the 1.0 to 4.5, from 4.4 to 4.57. So it's 457. That's not a big increase, but it's worse. And I have others. I guess I could, I don't know, I could put them up. But I mean, that's my main point, is that things are getting worse, not better. And I think it, this one maximum ratio of gross floor area to lot area is indicative of what happens when you build a big box, like what it's becoming now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Murphy, and I am a member of CHBA, which is Chesterhill Village Association, and I live on Craftsland Road. I haven't heard one person talk about the neighborhood. And a lot of people don't realize, this actually is a neighborhood. And the proposed, or the most recent rendition, doesn't present a neighborhood, particularly for the people who are going to live there. And if we're going to have a proposed building for people 55 plus, here I am, we have to have something that's more welcoming than a box. We have to have something that does not have that material that looks like mass art on Museum Avenue, Huntington Avenue. We need something that's softer, something less imposing, something that doesn't say, we're just here now. We have to be more respectful to those shop owners, Salon Lison and the rug shop, and the neighbors, the central cleaners. We have to try, based on what they're proposing, to try to maintain that sense of neighborhood. Because there is a neighborhood there that no one's talking about. But we're all either walking, which is part of my walking route, driving several times a day. The proposed site is where my mechanic used to be, and he's now since relocated to Needham. I question whether they had that many cars that would exceed what's going to go there. Because you forget, when someone moves in that's 55 plus or older, they become ill, they need an ambulance, they make deliveries, God knows, Amazon's delivering morning, noon, and night to people. I just think we have to start thinking, yes, development is going to happen. Yes, more housing needs to happen. We support that. I personally support that. But we have to do it so it's not so off-putting, that it looks like it's just thrown up there. I don't think that latest rendition is attractive at all. It doesn't complement Hammond and Heath Street developments. We need things that complement each other to soften the impact of large development. And I consider this a large development. I think the point that the gentleman had made about keeping sort of a stepping system, keeping it softer looking, is appropriate and needed because it's still a neighborhood. And I care about those shop owners. I care about the shops that I go to. I care about the people across the street. And most importantly, I really care about our potential new neighbors. And I want to make sure that it is the right kind of development for them as we welcome them into the neighborhood. And again, I question whether this development is going to be less trips than its previous usage. And I just think we can do a better job. And I think the newest rendition is not respectful enough to the town of Brooklyn. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are now on to ZDA discussion of what we have heard tonight. And I think at the end of that discussion, it is our goal to be able to provide a charge to the development team in terms of next steps moving forward on the project. Does anyone want to start?
I'll start.
Thank you.
All right. As one of the members has said on the original hearing, you may recall, those of you who are here, who are there as well, my original pushback was that I thought the building was too big. And I wanted to see it reduced by a four or two. But I was overruled. The point that I will make is that it can be, this new iteration, first of all, the original iteration is approved already. And we're not here to re-judge what has already been approved. However, the new iteration is not an improvement. It is an improvement for the parking, I get that. But it's not an improvement in terms of the aesthetic. And so as I intimated with my discussion with Cliff, I would like to see a significant scale back on the addition, so that it doesn't remain a box. I know this is not the final rendering. But I think that a significant amount of reduction in the corner, the south-facing corner, and the appearance of the south wall can be done. I realize that it does take away from the volume of the project, and therefore affects the economics of it. But nonetheless, you're here for a modification. The modification can be done without, I think, I know that the developer spent a lot of money to acquire the site. But the major development is the parking improvement. The aesthetics of the building and the volume of the building can be significantly reduced from the proposal that we have here. So my comment is, is that we can, there's more aesthetics that can be improved. It may reduce the volume of the building, but I don't believe it should be an economic block to the modification of the project. So that's my comment at this point.
I, as somebody who sat on the first go-around, I would echo all of Mark's comments. I would add that even as the board, as happens in 40B, was positioned in a way that required us to approve the project, I think we all had significant reservations about whether or not the proposed parking scheme was going to work. And I think we appreciate the development team's recognition that what was previously approved was essentially unworkable, and that the team has made efforts to address that. But I think addressing that so that you have a functional project should not come at the cost of an addition to or an expansion of the previously approved project that is not sufficiently integrated into the neighborhood. It really is just a big chunky box at this point. You've got a great architect. I am sure that there are ways that that can be mitigated, so that it is, so that the transition between the lower buildings, particularly the one-story commercial on the side, is handled appropriately. I think that, you know, in adding sort of this new mass, we've lost a lot of the articulation and a lot of the portions that made a building of this size palatable, and I would say even remotely palatable to this board, because I think we had reservations about something this large going in this location. But somehow, as Cliff suggested, there was this very fine balance struck, and that balance has been lost. So I would urge the developer, particularly the architect, to find a way to make it work. And that's my principal comment.
Well, speaking as someone who was not part of the original panel, and is here simply to consider the request for modification, I think, based on what I've learned about the project tonight and what I've read, it would probably be a very relatively easy decision if the request for modification were specifically to construct a garage to improve the parking. And unfortunately, in this case, the developer has taken this opportunity to expand the building in addition to addressing the parking issue. And I need to be convinced that that's necessary. I understand they had a parking problem, and that this was infeasible to construct what had originally been designed, and that they've now come up with a design that works for parking. But it is, as Joanna said eloquently, at the expense of the rest of the project. And I haven't been convinced that that should be necessary.
Without disagreeing with anything the three of you said, I won't repeat it either. I did appreciate hearing from the neighbor who spoke about the neighborhood. I think that's a good thing to ask the architect to keep in mind. I'm sure you've heard it. We're looking at the, we're looking at the area where the change has occurred, and that's not the, it's certainly the most visible and, you know, currently looming aspect of the building, you know, to the neighborhood of that Ms. Murphy spoke about. And I think you've heard some, you've heard suggestions about some combination possibly of stepping down and increasing the, I would say, both the verticality and the, and the appearance of a front on Hammond Street. I hope you can find some combination of those that will, that will bring back something, something better for the neighborhood.
Okay. So I think the only thing left for us to do is to schedule a next hearing on this.
What are we looking at?
I don't know what we're looking at. I guess I would ask the development team, how soon will you be ready to come back to us? When are you looking to come back?
Two weeks.
Yeah, I think-
I'm leaving on vacation. Yeah, I'll be away.
Do we have anything on the next week?
We do. We've got 1299 with these folks on Montauk. We have another 40B on the 17th, and a 40A.
We have one, I have one on the 11th.
That's Webster Street.
Yeah, I think we have ZDA hearings on July 10th, July 15th, July 17th. And keep in mind, we do want to give the applicant time to work on the plans, but we do want to have a staff meeting with the peer reviewer.
Right.
We could do the 23rd?
I cannot do it all that week.
Well, we don't actually have, I mean, you have the 40B schedules, but we don't have the 40A schedules.
We don't have a 40A schedule. What about July 31st? Or you do that?
31st, I will, I guess the 31st would work.
Yep.
31st?
No.
No.
Sorry, I'm traveling.
Would a Tuesday be out of the question? We would not be, we would not have this room.
Actually, you, Slade Board is on some, would be on some schedules.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for that.
Now, I mean, you can twice in July and only once in August.
So Maria, are you talking about the 9th, for example?
Well, I think that it's, it's possible. We, if you wanted to have like a three-week turnaround, maybe, maybe July 9th. turnaround, maybe, maybe July 9th.
I don't think I can do that.
They are meeting on the 9th. Okay, I'm sorry.
How about, how about August? Can we go into August again?
Can I just rule out, was July 30th out for all of you? That's a Tuesday?
You're out the 30th.
Oh, you are out. I, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. Okay.
As of now, we're meeting on the 6th.
Okay.
That's not, you can't guarantee you the wrong thing.
You're busy on the 16th.
The 16th of?
July.
July.
July?
Lark is away, aren't you away on the 16th?
I am. I am busy on the 16th.
He does not have the 16th. She does not have the 16th.
August 6th?
I will be gone.
Randolph, are you gone a whole week, the week of the 3rd?
I've gone those whole two weeks.
Is it the 5th and the 12th?
You can't take two-week vacations.
Not during 40Bs, your season. Be kidding.
Did, did, neither July 17th nor 18th, we checked both of those?
17th I can do.
We have a 40B on the 17th.
You do, too.
445.
On the 7th, not the 17th of August.
Oh.
Sorry, I was in July.
You were, he was in July.
You meant the 17th of July?
Yeah.
I think there is, I think there's 445. Are some of you serving on that, so that's out? That's a Thursday.
We've got 40As.
Yeah, I don't have the calendar.
I know I'm sitting and chairing that night.
Needs the same board.
Oh, you need the same people.
Yes.
445.
445.
No, it's, it's us.
Yeah.
It's not the two of us, but not the two of them.
So what happened to August? That, August?
We have Randolph gone for two weeks in August.
And which two weeks are you gone, Randolph?
From the 3rd through the 19th or something like that.
Through the 19th, okay.
And I leave for Africa on the 21st for two weeks.
Why did you change that? On the 21st.
I'd like to meet at 6:00 AM in the morning one day.
I mean, maybe we get pulled into that, I don't know.
So did we look at the beginning of the week with, I know it has July 4th in it, but is that?
I'm, I'm away. I'm out of, I'm in London.
Okay, that's why we didn't look.
Yeah. And I'm not flying back for this.
Maria, how many, how many more do we, do we know how many more hearings we will do, or that we're not?
It's, it's, it's really, we have six months to close, so.
I'm gone the next two weeks.
Summer is very difficult.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
Well, then we've got to go into August.
We don't, we don't have any dates in August, though, because Randolph's gone for two. He gets back in the 21st.
Right. And you're gone on the 3rd, so what happened to the 3rd? Oh, you're gone on the 30th. You can't do the 30th.
No.
Boy, I, I'm.
What about August 20th?
That's just before you go, right?
It's the tip before I go. It's not great, but I might be a little.
Yeah, I can do it.
You can do that.
I can do that.
Okay, August 20th at 7:00 PM.
I mean, into September? I don't see why not.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, this summer, I think what you're finding is that everybody's got, we did not coordinate vacations, you know, last year in order to be available for us. But I think, you know, once.
What would this, what would the topic of the second meeting?
Well, you know, so what we would be covering August 20th would be the geotechnical along with the follow-up to architecture and any of the geometry concerns related to the parking. So it doesn't, doesn't look like you're looking for more technical data regarding parking and traffic, justification of parking ratios. It didn't seem like you wanted more work done there. It's really relegated to geometry, foundation methods. And the geotech will be a big deal. So I think that probably August 20th and probably follow-up to geotech in September.
How's September 11th?
Yeah, I was going to suggest that week.
That's fine.
That's a good week.
September 11th, does that work for you?
September 11th will work.
Roshan is September 11th, okay? Maria, do we need an extension from the applicant for?
No, we're going to, so the hearing was opened in April, so we do have 180 days, and that would take us to October. So I think at that point, we'll know how we need to plot out the rest of the hearing. We made a, need an extension for conditions.
Okay, with those hearings scheduled, we are concluded for tonight, and we are going to continue this hearing until Tuesday, August 20th at 7:00 PM. Thank you.